It looks like everybody's in.
Good evening, everybody. This meeting is Bridgewater zoning board of appeals. It'll be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public permitted, but every effort we made to ensure that the public can be at can have adequate access to the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours it'll be posted on a link for their town's website or in social media page. Following members of the zoning board of appeals are participating remotely. Myself, Brian Heath, Chair, Anna Klimas, Vice Chair, Dan Greenberg, Member. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as a roll call vote. Following Bridgewater staff are also participating remotely. Robert Rulie, Director of Economic Community Development, Steve Solari, Building Commissioner. So at this time, everybody's mic is muted. The board's mics are muted throughout the whole meeting and as it appears on the agenda, the project representatives mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we'll ask that you use your chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and your address prior to asking your question. Chair will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise your hand feature in the participant menu and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and your address before you ask a question. If you're on the phone, you can use the star nine to do the raise your hand. So we're going to get going here. We have two items before us. First item is a variance for hold on. Come on. We had 259 Summer Street, a variance in regards to a side setback under 14, excuse me, 4.4. Yeah, 4.4.13.
Jeremy, could I interrupt for a second?
Certainly.
I think there are a number of members of the public that are here for the Sharon Court matter.
Okay.
You wanted to have a motion to take that out of order just to deal with that?
All right. Anna or Dan, would you care to take a make a motion to hear the Sharon Court first, which should be very quick?
I'll make a motion to take 135 Sharon Court special permit out of order and as to the first item on our agenda this evening.
Can I get a second, Dan?
I will second that.
All in favor? Dan?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So we are moving over quickly to the Sharon Court, which was a special permit regards to a building. Is the representative for Sharon Court here with us tonight?
They are not, but they submitted a written request asking that the application be withdrawn.
Okay, and I did, I saw that. So we just take a motion to withdraw the application for the special permit in relation to Sharon Court?
The only caveat is whether you want to accept the withdrawal with or without prejudice.
Yeah, I'd say we can do it without prejudice. I don't think they're coming back.
And I'll make a motion to withdraw the special permit request for 135 Sharon Court.
Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor? Dan?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So the special permit for Sharon Court has been withdrawn and we will move on to the next item on the agenda. As I said, it's a variance request for a side setback for 259 Summer Street. Is the representative for the applicant here? Larry?
I'm
Patrick, alright.
I'm Patrick Driscoll. I'm one of the people involved in the project. I reside at 35 Stonehill Lane. Could I share, Steve, could I share my screen? Is that possible?
Sure. Bob, you'll allow him to. Bob, you're muted. Screen sharing is enabled. Okay.
And again, just for the record, I'm Pat Driscoll. I reside at 35 Stonehill Lane. Paulson Carter and I purchased this property a couple of months ago on Leonard Street and Single Street. And we really, you know, want to do a great job of this property and excuse me, restore the existing home, be respectful to the neighborhood, at the same time, develop the property down below. So little history on the property. It's a historic house. Look at the Form B through the state. It's described as one of the most architecturally sophisticated Georgian homes, excuse me. So we seek to responsibly develop the property while maintaining and preserving the home. Built somewhere between 17 and 60 and 1780. We've created two new lots. We meet all the requirements for those lots and we're leaving the main house on a big, you know, one acre piece of land. We actually gave up one lot to keep the bond with the house, but we can't give up two lots to to make it work. So just looking like a blank slate, you knock the bond down, you get four lots. By leaving the bond there, we leave an acre, almost just shy of an acre. We keep the house as it is. We restore it. And we, you know, we down below. So if the bond were removed, we could do a four lot subdivision. We're just proposing three. Again, oversized lot for the house. We do, we do have options with the bond where we would need a variance. We determined they're all undesirable. I actually brought David Moore there early on to look at the bond, give me some history on it, talk about moving it. And all those options were kind of undesirable because they require some sort of demolition. And we hear a lot of times in town that, you know, they have to demolish historic houses or demolish historic historic bounds because something's economically unfeasible. You know, we, we're okay with losing a lot. We're okay with leaving the bond there. We can make it work and it'll be a great project. It would be a beautiful project that I think the neighbors and the town will all be be happy with. So we do have options. We could move lot two, the lot line for lot two to the right of the bond, but this is undesirable because it removes the bond from the historic home. We could demolish the bomb. We could remove 15 feet of the bomb. We could move the bomb 15 feet. All of these are undesirable. They require some sort of demolition. And Bridgewater passed the demolition delay ordinance D 2016 dash zero zero five that if it's a significantly historic structure, which we believe it is, and if the historic commission deemed it was historically significant, they would probably encourage us to seek out alternative options that would preserve, rehabilitate, or restore. And that's really what we're trying to do. We're trying to seek an alternative option to keep it on its historic foundation in that spot, keep it with the house. It would be beneficial to us if we knocked it down. We could get another lot, but that's not of the former owner. That's not what I represent to the neighbors. We're trying to keep this as much of this history intact. We have the home sold to somebody that's contingent on the bonds thing where it is. Use the restoration of the house. Put a lot of money into the house, keep it as we have a D restriction in the in the agreement that they won't further subdivide the land. They won't demolish the house. And I did early on bring David Moore and I do, he was, I asked him to come tonight just to talk about the history of the bond. He couldn't make it, but he did provide me with a letter that I that I can pull up as well, that he'd bring it to the historic commissioner and they did talk about the history of the bond and the foundation. And they, they would like to keep it where it is and I'll pull that up after. So just a little history on the house. For those of you that don't know, it's a stunning house setback on Summer Street on the corner of Leonard Street. The main home will be completely restored, added to, and a single family that once lived in Bridgewater moving back will occupy. The bond, as you can see, is, it makes it a beautiful setting. It's set back on the property with a curved driveway. That's on the corner of Leonard Street. Another picture of the home with the bond in the back setting. All this land for the right is going to remain with the house, part of the 41,000 square feet that remains. A visual, the lot line will be right around where that tree is. I don't know if you can see where my cursor is, but right around where the tree is, that would be the lot line. So we're keeping a large lot with that house, again, almost an acre land. And in this area, just to be clear, the minimum lot size, we could go down to 18,500 square feet, knock the bond down. We'd have to modify the house. We'd have to maybe take that back room off, but we could get a third new lot in there. We don't want to do that. We want to keep it the way it looks for the neighbors. For the people buying it, for the history of the town, we want to, we want to keep it the way it is. Again, picture of the bomb. This would be the foundation and they, they call it a hammered granite slash stone foundation. So if we cut off 15 feet, if we moved it over 15 feet, if we demolished it, this, this would all be gone. We're trying to keep this all intact. Again, some of the granite posts, pictures of the foundation. The bond again. This, this floor is a this is the, the history of, of the, of the home. It's a Form B. It's just, it puts everything on the historic registry for the, for the, the home. This is the actual Form B that was filled out. And then you can see the, the Form B that was filled out. This, this was the, this home was built for the Snells originally. Then it went transferred to the Leonard's and most recently to the Cliver family. I mean, you can see that it does talk about the outbuildings, a large wood, single clad bond to the rear of the house. It is shown right here on the corner of Leonard Street. We're trying to keep all of that intact. It talks about, it talks about, you know, the history of the house. It's one of the most architecturally sophisticated houses in town. And we want to preserve all that and we're going to put, a lot of money is going to be put into the renovation, the restoration of this house, the grounds, the exterior, the windows. It's going to be something I think everybody would be really happy with. This, this is what, you know, if, if we knocked the bond down and we, we modified the house a little bit, let me figure out. This, this is what we could do without a variance. Okay, so, so right now, lot one, which is this, this area right here could be two houses. We could modify the existing house. You could, if you wanted to maximize the site, which we don't, you could do four duplexes. What we're proposing is just to keep in this big area here, one house in the bomb and, and responsibly develop these other, these other two parcels. So this is what, this is what we're trying to
Can you get him to quiet down?
I, this, this is what we're looking to do is, is not do this, keep the existing historic home where it is. The bond stays where it is and we did restrict the, the property so that it remains. This is, this is what it would look like in the end and this is what you have in your packet. So we do need a side setback for this corner of the bomb. We meet it from, from lot to lot, from lot one to lot two, but from that, that point, yeah, we do need a setback. So if you look at, if you wanted to demolish any of this, because we're not, you know, lots two and three are going to be developed, whether we get the variance or not. We hope to get the variance. But if we have to demolish it, we have to, I believe, and I spoke to Mr. Moore about it, we'd have to go to demolition delay. And we don't want to do that. That's why we haven't applied to demolition delay. But this ordinance says that owners of preferably preferred structures are encouraged to seek out alternative options that will preserve, rehabilitate, restore such structures. We're looking to do just that. We're looking to keep the existing bond on this existing foundation right where it is. Where it is kind of creates a hardship because of, of how far back it is on the property. In doing so, we lose a lot, but again, that's fine. You hear all the time, you hear about other projects in town, hey, we have to knock down historic house because we need more density. We need, you know, it's not financially viable. I don't understand that because we can make this financially viable, but we can't, we can't make it financially viable by losing another lot. And that's, that's the demolition delay. So we, you know, we seek to keep it where it is. We seek to, to improve upon it. We seek to keep that one big piece, one lot. We seek to have that rehabilitated and then down below we, we which isn't before this board tonight, on lots two and three, there'll be two, two structures. So I'm going to pull up, let me see, how do I get that?
Hey Patrick, a quick question?
Yes, sir. I can't see who that is. I'm sorry.
It's Brian Heath.
Right, go ahead.
Hey, so I just want to confirm. You are part of the 259 Summer Street Realty Trust, the owners, I mean, the applicant and actual owners now?
Myself and Paulson Carter. We are the actual owners now, correct?
Okay. All right. Just wanted to confirm.
So I did, when we weren't the actual owners, I did bring Mr. Moore to the site. How we would proceed if we wanted to demo the, the bond, because I did, I did represent the owner. I wouldn't demo the, the main structure of the try, we do everything we could for the neighbors. I mean, it's going to be about the neighbors and the neighborhood, as was I, that we restored the house. I brought Mr. Moore in and he, he found a sign in there from the old barrel store, which was downtown. Which was, I guess, they've been looking for it in time. It's, it's an old horse barn. It's, it's beautiful, porcelain beam. It's a beautiful structure. And he, he did, I'm not sure which meeting, one of his last meetings, about another historic property in town. We did bring this up to the board. Me that he would like to see it remain. So that's really what we're trying to do. We're seeking with we're seeking an alternative to demolition on that piece to keep that intact. We we're gonna, we're gonna do what we're gonna do anyway, but we would like to but I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Silver. I don't want to talk too much and take up too much of your time, but I appreciate it and happy to answer questions at any point. Mr. Silver, do you want to go over the technical stuff in the plans?
Uh, yes, I can do that. If you want to take your screen, share that down and Rebecca can bring up the, the plan. Or we can use yours. It doesn't matter.
It's up. I shared it. Do you see it?
Yeah, I cannot see it.
Did I do it wrong?
We can see it. We can see it.
Okay.
All right, hold on.
Yep.
Okay, so I can't, I can't, I gotta bring it over here though. That's fine.
They don't know what you're dealing with.
So the plan that's, the plan that's before you, after hearing what Patrick had detailed for you is that when we, we got involved, we were looking for a way to make, you know, to make it such that we did not have to demolish or attempt to try to relocate that bond. That bond is just, to me, it's a, it's really a treasure. And part of it is that he had a couple of photographs in there that showed underneath it, the way the foundation was done, that there's actually an access to it from Leonard Street to the underside of the bond. And to take that bond and even try to move that to another foundation would, you would lose that historic foundation, fieldstone foundation wall that, that is there. The way that it's positioned on the lot is what causes the issue with today's zoning for us to be before you. So what we're looking to do here is, is to, to seek a variance from the, from the setback on the Leonard Street side to the bond. And in doing that, we would still grant back to the owners of lot one, an easement for them to be, for lot one.
I'm sorry.
For the benefit of lot one. So when lot two is conveyed out at some point, it would have with it an easement that would allow for the access to the underside of the bond so that nothing would have to change in terms of how that bond functions. And so, you know, the, we feel that it's, 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 you know, the land is, is a lot of property here that I would say the hardship is that in, is that the, the shape of the land doesn't allow for you to take that, you know, that four acres or whatever, whatever our total acreage is. I mean, our full lot possibility and not do it in a regular conventional way. It's, it's, I think it's a little over, is it over two acres, close to two acres? And so it's this configuration will allow for lots two and three to still have their frontage on Leonard Street, have required areas for, for duplex lots for, for those two locations. But the, the lion's share of the, of the land would still be allocated to lot one, which as you can see, it 41,000 has, as Pat had indicated, there's sufficient area there and sufficient frontage to make that two duplex lots. And we just don't feel as though that that's the right thing to do. So, so what we're asking for is that in the, we feel that the variance request is one that is certainly in the public interest to, to grant the relief that we're asking. It allows for that bond to be left in its current location and preserve a little bit of history. We lose so much history in this community. It's nice to have an opportunity to, to retain it. I mean, as you recall, where CVS was, when CVS was being built, that was a place where there was a tulip tavern and the long and short of it was the tulip tavern was demolished prior to any ability to try to save that structure. And the CVS was built. So progress does happen and sometimes it's necessary. But in a case like this, I think that this is it's almost, if the history of Bridgewater, you can consider it a sacred lot of Bridgewater, I would suggest to you that this house qualifies as being what this town is all about. And that bond is certainly in that same in, in that, in that same era and it's, and it just is, be ashamed to lose it. So I know it's an unusual request. It's not one that you hear very often. But I would say to you is that it, the justification for this in the, in the public interest, I think certainly outweighs the fact that it would not have the required variance to, to a sideline to this lot two that's being created. And so that's, that's pretty much where we are and we're hoping that the, the board can see its way to, to grant the, the relief that's being requested.
And, and just to piggyback on Mr. Silver's comments, you know, when you look at that D ordinance, the demolition delay ordinance, that's really where I'm trying to get the relief. It's, it's it asks us to seek alternatives to demolition and the alternative we seek is the variance. And that's, that's really what'll keep the bond in its current location. That's really what'll keep the foundation the way it is and everything else. Lots two and three are going to happen either way, you know? We have to move the bond, knock it down. You know, it's, it's going to happen. We can sell the historic lumber to somebody else and it'll be a net zero for us to get rid of it. But we don't want to do that. If you walk in the barn, it's a beautiful, but I think there's four or five horse stalls still there. The woman Polly that owned it for years took fabulous care of it. We have a former resident that moved to New Hampshire that is going to restore the entire property and do a fabulous job with it, that wants to keep the bond in that location. If we have to move it and knock it down, we have to move it and knock it down. But it's, it's just the whole setting is what we're trying to retain. The whole setting for the neighborhood, the whole setting for the historic property and everything else. If this were a two car garage that was the same size as built in 1980, there, there would already be excavated through it and be gone. It's, you know, it's, this thing is going to cost a lot of money to keep it where it is. It's going to have to be a lot of rehab to the outside and everything else. It's, it's somewhat of a liability in terms of, of fixing it up, but as far as the character, the look, everything else to that property, that's really why we're trying to retain it right where it is. And we seek, we seek that alternative to demolition by coming to you for the variance. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Larry, guys, have you, I'm not gonna, I didn't know about the, the easement, which is nice. But you know, the variance that you're looking for is, is big in comparison to the location. I mean, you're talking three point, what, 3.7 feet from the building? Have you thought of, I'm going to just share my screen? Have you thought about just making the line down here and going for the variance on the frontage? Because that way, the only thing that this thing, this line goes right over the, the foundation wall that extends out into the property. So if this owner has to do anything with that, or say they had to do something with that, I'm not sure your easement's gonna
The easement's gonna, would include protection of that wall so that it, they have total control. So the ownership of that triangle that you have there would be, would be with lot two, but the control of that area would be with lot one. And, and you know, I get, well, I hear what you're saying that, you know, should, should the variance request have been for the, for the frontage at the lot, at the lot setback line for lot two? Certainly, that's a different approach, but we felt as though that where a lot two is being created in, in a way that conforms 100%, we felt that the bond being controlled with the easements would give us the same level of protection for it. Now, the other part of it could be is that, I mean, the board could condition that there has to be a row of abreviations or something that also just provides some sort of a additional protection to the bond from the backside.
I guess the question is, why can't you just take that bottom of the triangle, that line straight down to the corner?
Why? Because then you'd have
They don't meet the requirements for 125 at the setback line.
Right, but if Well, you do, now you're just asking a variance, which, which this is useless anyways. I mean, come on, it's out here. You're, you're coming in at the property here.
That's correct.
Going for a variance. I, you know, what, what I'm concerned with is ownership. We've seen it before. Oh, you got a variance and now people are fighting over the variance. The other thing, like I said, your stone wall extends out into here. If they've got to do something to that, well, it's still not their property. Oh, and I just got an easement and all this. What's the difference of going down here and, and going for the variance, which we like better than, than this? And you eliminate your need for, for an easement?
All right, Mr. Heath, can I speak?
You ended up with two variance requests there.
Ow! You still have one.
Mr. Silver, can I, can I speak? Mr. Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I, I think that the way it's designed, they're all conforming lots. So they're all, they're all conforming. So if the bond gets moved in the future, if the bond gets lost to a fire, if the bond gets modified, all, all three lots, lot one, two, and lot three meet the requirements. So from a zoning standpoint, I think that it's more important that the lots meet the requirements than, it is an accessory structure. We will do, the variant, the easement that we need to do isn't as wide as Mr. Silver is showing. And it'll be for, it'll be a perpetual easement for, for access and for maintenance of the wall and, you know, the easement, the easement will handle any access issues. I just think that it is an accessory structure. It could be moved in the future. It could be reduced in size. It could be anything. And then at least, at least the lots are conforming and not have, not have, not have a non-conforming lot because even though we still have a 225 feet of the street in the zoning, you have to carry that back to the setback line, which is 35 feet. So now you have a non-conforming lot on lot two. I just think from a zoning standpoint, you'd rather have a, a non, you'd rather have a non-conforming. I think, I think you'd rather have an accessory structure and that's what it is. It's, it's not a house. It's not anything that's to be occupied. It's simply an accessory structure like a shed. It's just, I think you're better off to have that accessory structure closer to the lot line, but have all the lots conforming.
So besides your concern for, for the zoning, do you have any other objections to creating a line like Mr. Heath is saying? So besides your concern for um, for the zoning, do you have any other objections to creating a line like Mr. Heath is saying?
Uh, I I I think that it's a, it's a, it's another way to. It's another way to achieve. Um.
Well, you guys are going against each other. You you're arguing one way that, oh, you know, we got this structure here. We wanna keep it, you know, we don't wanna do this, but we want a variance. We're saying, well. If if that's really what you wanna do and you wanna keep it, yes, eh eh, everything could burn down at some point. We don't know. But what we're dealing with is it is a situation that we're looking at right now. And. Having. Been at this for a little while. I'm not really wild about the variance you're asking for.
So so what what you're suggesting is, is that a. That the variance uh. Be one. To the frontage on lot, on lot two.
It's the set, it's the, the fringe is the same. You're still gonna be at one twenty-five. Eh, you're just asking.
It's the frontage at the setback.
The frontage setback.
Which is where it's met, where it's measured.
Yeah, so. And so who, if if we give you the variance, then it. It's, yes, it's non-conforming, but you've got the variance from. From the town that it doesn't have to be conformal. In essence, it is based upon what the town has granted you. So that one kinda doesn't fly with me either.
So I'm sorry, what's that? If you. You're saying that the other.
If we give you, if we give you the variance, then. A whole, oh, it's non-conforming, you know, this, okay, but that part I, you lost me at because. If 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 you ask for that variance, if we changed it and we went with that variance. Then it is. Is conforming. You've gotten the.
I I agree with you. It is because now you're talking. That the bond is really looking at a. Um. A twenty-foot separation to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Heath is suggesting is a creative solution here, and I think it makes it a lot more palatable for us to accept something like this. So if you guys. You know, don't have any. Um. You know, anything uh. That takes, you know, anything that you're. Worried about with this situation. We we just feel like it would be a little bit more, uh, a little bit easier for us to digest.
Absolutely, I understand. So uh, now is that, is that a um? Is that a motion that could be made? To grant, to grant it and. Subject to a plan being provided that. Indicates that?
I think it is, Bob. Can't we make?
Yeah, you could conditionally approve it with revision to the plan as discussed, and we can. Come up with the legal. Definitions within the decision. Uh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I know there are members of the public that wanna speak after.
Right.
Well, the the only, the only problem is is. Uh, I think a frontage waiver also requires a. A special permit from the planning board. So.
We grant frontage waivers all the time.
You got, you grant frontage uh, variances.
Variances.
But in the, in the, in the statute. Uh, when you, when you grant a frontage uh, variance. It it does require a planning board. To grant a waiver for that same amount.
Right, and you have, that would require uh.
It's interesting, but it's happened a couple of times, and I did one on Perkins Street.
I I think that the challenge that. The board has is that if we're looking at what the required findings of fact are, that, you know, you're. Is, you know, this option, I think, is the least amount of relief that you need. To to satisfy what you're doing. I mean, you know, theoretically, the hardship was created when the lots were subdivided. So if we're looking for the least amount of relief, then, you know, Brian's suggestion is. Making it more palatable for them to come to that point.
But if we, but if we go back to the, if we go back to the um, demolition delay ordinance. Right? And because we may decide now that i- if this is gonna hold this up, and if this is gonna hold this up too long, we may have, we may have to decide to move it. We may decide to demolish it, right?
Well, you have to go to planning board anyways. I mean, so the the variances can be granted tonight conditionally, but you're not coming back to ZBA. Um, you you're. I mean, again, I mean, you know, there can't be, you know, sure, you could do four lots. But you're choosing not to, but, you know, again, eh, the.
Wait, Steve?
Steve.
Yeah, I I just wanna make sure, so make sure everyone knows this. This hearing was for a uh, variance. For two fifty-nine lot one for the garage, correct?
Correct.
It wasn't for a variance for lot two. You cannot make a decision on lot two because this variance wasn't for lot two, it was for. Lot one for a variance for a garage. You can't now just say. Oh, we'll give you the variance for lot two. That's gonna be a total separate application. You cannot do them both. You cannot swap one for the other in this in a hearing.
Good point. That makes sense, yep.
Well, I guess, I guess my, my thing is this, and we we may. Look to raise part of it or do something like that now, and I don't, I don't know what we're gonna do. Paulson Potter, my partner, loves to discuss it, but. I I was really filing on this under the. The demolition delay ordinance, like, all right, we don't wanna demolish it. We don't wanna move it. We have a plan here to make all three lots comply. We have a way to maintain access, to maintain everything. Nothing changes other than that triangle. And 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 a historic structure gets gets completely rehabilitated. So I I.
You're gonna be a six month, you're gonna be held up six months if it's, if you're gonna demo the building anyways, so you're not losing, I mean. You know. What what you, you're not losing any time.
I think your, your. Objection to the suggestion, the of the lesser alternative suggestion goes against your argument for substantial hardship for your variance request here, because you're saying, well, then I'll just move it. Or, you know, but if you can't move it, that's part of your substantial hardship, or demolish it, so.
I'm not saying we can't move. We we probably have to go to demolition delay. We'd we'd have to discuss, you know, alternatives, um. And I I just thought this was the best alternative, be it three conforming lots. With a bond that just needs one side setback line.
I I, Mr. Chairman, I I I respectfully understand. Uh, what appears to be a consensus of the of the board. Um, I would suggest that we would take this. Ask for a con. Uh, either a continuance of this. To allow for either a new application to be submitted. Um, but what I do think you need to do is to hear. Uh. Uh, the butters and anyone else who.
No, we're gonna open it up.
Testimony.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we've kind of exhausted.
If we were in agreement on the other.
Yeah, and we understand, I totally, I I I totally understand. The board's position. And I understand uh, that you've given us a pathway. Uh, to be able to get to where we'd like to go. It um. And and I think that at this point here, I don't think there's anything else to discuss on that part of it. Uh, but I do think input from anyone else would be uh, would be helpful, though.
Okay. Bob, if you want.
Yeah, Brian, if you could stop sharing your screen for a moment.
I just wanted to say, um. Anna or or Dan, if you have any further questions for uh, Larry or or uh, Mr. Driscoll?
Yeah, I have, I have one other question. Uh, Mr. Driscoll, you said on lots two and three that you were gonna proceed regardless of what you do on lot one. What is the plan on those lots? Are they duplex buildings? Are they a single family? And is it affected by what happens to lot one? What style building they are?
Um, yes, we do have, we we do have two duplex-style condo uh, for sale uh, buildings proposed. Um, that's a whole other permitting set. Um. You know, we we have to, you know, we're we're gonna have to evaluate after this meeting if wh- what we do, if we wanna change that lot line or not. Um, I don't know if it's better for us for sale purposes if we have three conforming lots or not, but. But we um. You know, we'll have to evaluate it, but 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 lots, I mean, lots. Lots two and three don't have any zoning issues. Lot one, I mean, lot one is the one with the zoning issue because that building is too close. Um. And that's, that's it, that's tha- that's the issue at this point, so.
Yeah, I I guess I didn't know if um, if you end up subdividing lot one and putting four single families versus two duplexes on the other lots, if any of that was a consideration.
So lot one could not be four lots, the whole parcel, so so is three lot shown now? You could subdivide the whole property into four, four parcels. We we're not, we're not gonna do that. But I mean, we wanna keep the barn where it is. I mean, we we, that's, that's the main thing.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob, if you want to open it up.
Yeah, so I know that Carol Anne had put uh, several questions into the chat. Uh, Carol Anne, give you an opportunity to. Ask those questions live and in person, or I can read them out of the chat. I'll. Ask you to unmute yourself if you'd like to do that. And just your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, uh, my name is Carol Anne Reiber. I live at two seventy-three Summer Street, so I look directly at um, the former Polly and Mrs. Cliber's house. Um, I've lived here for twenty-three years. I'm very happy to hear that you're at least considering keeping the barn. Um, I do not think that structure can be moved. It would have to be um, unfortunately, um, torn down. Just because of the historic nature, um, the, and I'm not an engineer, but just the um. The foundation, it's a rock granite foundation. It's beautiful. About six years ago, Polly had the whole thing re- um, reshingled. Um, it is a beautiful structure, and I do think it has historical value to the town. Um, the Cliber's lot and the lot on the other side of me on two seventy-three Summer Street were owned by brothers. Um, my house, that piece of land was sold, I believe in eighteen ninety-five, and that's where my house now sits. Um, just to give you a little uh, background about where things are in this particular area. I'm, I have a question about lot number one, the house and the barn. I have heard um, that someone is buying the house and they're redoing it. It's sat empty for two months now. So I just have a question, who owns lot one? And is the house being rented to someone?
We we own lot one. It is not rented, no. We own the whole parcel now. It's it's. It's pending sale. Um, and whether or not she renovates it or not is dependent on this hearing. So I mean, that's. It's it's waiting to be purchased, but the bank won't. I mean, basically, the bank won't allow the sale to go through until we either move the bond, get a variance, or. Um. Or or resolve the bond issue. So we have to, we have to slide it over, we have to cut fifteen feet off of it, or we have to get the variance.
So currently, you own lot one, which includes the house and the barn. But this person who's coming to renovate it, you're then selling lot one to them?
Lot one will be sold, yes. It'll be a homeowner, home o- home homeowner occupied. They're gonna restore the entire property, yes.
Okay, so lot one is then being resold, house and barn. To, you already have a buyer. And that's why the house has been empty for two months.
Correct. We just, we 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 had a sale date. Um. Right at the same day we were buying it from from Mrs. Cliver. And um, we just, you know, the engineering took a little bit of time to break it up. We we thought we were gonna be on the June seventh uh, ZBA meeting. Uh, we've been bumped a couple of times, so that's, that's why we're here now on the twenty-fourth, so. It's just, it's just a delay in the sale, this. But that's all.
Interesting. Um, Polly was asked to vacate the house early if she could, and it's interesting to hear that that that's been delayed, but these things happen. That's totally understandable. Um.
I I don't know, I I mean, I think Polly might be on, we actually. Asked her to stay longer than she wanted to, so. Um, that, that was not the case.
Hmm, interesting. Um, so then I did have a question about lots two and three. Um, and I'm also a little bit concerned. I think someone else brought this. What's to stop lot one from turning into an entire row of townhouses? Um, I'm a little concerned about that, if that sale, so if this sale does not go through. Um, and you are left with lot one, you will try to find another buyer for lot one, or then you make different decisions about what to do with lot one?
Right now, we have a plan for lot one. It includes the house and the barn, um. Unless that changes, I I don't know. I mean, we, the zoning would never allow for a row of townhouses there regardless, because in that area, you have to have certain. Lot size and dimensional density requirements, but we do have a plan for lot one. We do have a buyer. They they're eager, they they have an architect, they're eager to get started, but. We have to resolve um, the variance issue.
Mr. Driscoll, correct me if I'm wrong, did you not say that? That conveyance would have restrictions for the future in terms of no ability to subdivide?
The the the.
For lot one.
The deal I, that that the the. Agreement I have with Mrs. Cliver. Is that. We will not. Tear down the main house. We can move it, we can alter it, we can do, we can cut off the back of it to make a third lot. But the 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 deal I had with it was, I told her I'd do everything I could to save the barn in its current location.
Yeah, but I believe you mentioned on the record previously about a restrictive covenant about. Future subdivision of lot one.
Yeah, so, but my purchase and sale with the new. Owner, if they go forward with it. Is the house won't be torn down. And the lot will not be further subdivided, correct?
Thank you.
Um, and as as you mentioned, you said the the town would not allow um, a row of townhouses, but they are allowing, in what I understand, the town is saying you can fit. Two townhouses for four families or four tenants in this space. I find that very hard to believe, but if that's what the town is allowing, um, I'm just concerned that, so why wouldn't the town then allow it to go further? What's to stop that from happening? I'm a little concerned about that.
It could, and we showed that, we showed that plan, but we don't wanna do that. We're trying to preserve what's there. And that's, our plan is, is to restore the house, restore the barn. That's our plan, to keep that lot. To keep that lot. The reason we want the restrictive covenant as the sellers. Is that we don't wanna sell it to somebody. Knowing that it could be two lots and then have them turn around and knock the barn down and subdivide the land. We, I mean, we don't want that to happen. We, if that that's gonna happen, we'd do it. So when we sold it in agreement, we have an agreement with with the woman and and man purchasing it, that. They'll restore the house, they'll restore the barn, they can't subdivide the land, they can't knock the house down. So that's, that's all in our purchase and sale agreement. But our, but our, but our purchase and sale agreement, and the reason it's been vacant for two months is is we have. Been working with the town uh, on permitting. And we're here tonight to discuss it, and. It's not gonna get sold until the the bond issue gets resolved. And that work won't be able to stop until they have the the bank financing.
Will there be an additional meeting? I'm not sure if this is the right forum, because again, this is to talk about the variance in the barn. I'm not sure if this is the right forum, but is there gonna be another meeting to discuss what's going to happen with lots two and three?
Yes, it has to go before the planning board.
Okay, so that would be the place to talk about parking, water, those concerns?
Anything related to lots two and three, that would be the appropriate forum.
Okay, thank you very much.
If anyone else from the public has. Uh. Comment they wanna make, uh, you could just, if you're on camera, raise your hand so I can see. If you're not on camera, use the raise your hand feature so I can see you. And just give me time to scroll through.
David Dars. I think David Moore is trying to signal.
Yeah. David, I think you're unmuted, David, so you can go ahead.
Yeah, I I just wanna confirm the letter that we sent in.
Dana, just your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, uh, David Moore, uh, fifty-four Flag Street. Current chairman of the Historical Commission. I just wanted to confirm the uh, letter that we sent in tonight. I apologize for the uh, time, lack of not, it not being timely, but uh, we got it in. Uh, we just wanna emphasize that we've, we've seen too many old houses in town. Literally going to hell. Uh, because of lack of uh. Care and so forth. This house is absolutely beautiful inside and out. And uh, we'd like to see whatever could possibly be done. To preserve the integrity, the historical integrity of both the house and the barn. We appreciate, it seems like those are the efforts being made tonight, and we, as a historical commission, we do uh, appreciate that. I wanna leave it at that.
Seems like there's an earthquake on Flag Street right now.
Sitting in the corner, and I'm trying to hold my iPad still. I should be on my laptop, and it wouldn't be shaking. There's no trains going by right now, so it shouldn't be shaking.
All right, so uh, Jesse, let me find Jesse. Jesse, if you wanna unmute yourself and just name an address for the record if you'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, my name's Jesse Ramsey. I'm in a butter. On Worcester Street.
What address, please?
One thirty-two.
Thank you.
And my my one question was, uh. Given that this is. Going through um, Historic Commission. Why hasn't this been reviewed at all? Um, by the Historic Commission? Has the owner? Um, applied or the past owner? For it to be a historic structure?
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I answer that? Sir? So there is, there is a a Form B. So there is, there is a, a Form B I, I showed earlier on the property with the state. Um, it is, it is a registered historic home with, with the state. It doesn't have any restriction, and Mr. Moore can answer this. It could be knocked down, it could be totally renovated to something else. That's not our intent. I, from what I understand, just talking to Mr. Moore about this property, what a Form B is simply for inventory purposes. It's an old historic home, it's part of the fabric of the town, it's been deemed historic. Um, it's that, that is on file with the state. It's called a Form B. I don't believe there's anything else, Mr. Moore, on the property, is there?
That's correct. Uh, it's just an inventory form. Uh, it could be useful if the owners were. Um, applying for some sort of a historic base grant. But uh, other than that, uh, it, it has no preservation with it, just because it has a Form B.
A, a homeowner has the opportunity to.
Yeah.
Buy their house on the National Register if they choose to. Uh, the other way that that happens is if a uh, a portion of a town or a section of town. Is de- determined to be uh, historic, and that whole district is on the register. And that's through the Secretary, the US Secretary of Interior. Uh, I don't believe that either of those have happened here. Um, but as Mr. Moore and Mr. Driscoll articulated, that. I think they're all, the, the efforts are to preserve the home.
Well, given um, that they're using the delay ordinance.
They're not.
And, okay, it's in the application for the variance.
Correct, so if we were, if, if we decide to demolish it, then we would have to apply, from what I understand. If, if we were to, if we were to demolish it, to modify it, to move it.
How would it qualify uh, to be considered without being deemed by the, by the Historic Commission?
Right now, we're not asking to demolish it. Right now, we're asking just to keep it as, as it is.
Yeah, but you're using it as a mechanism in order to, to uh, claim a hardship, which is fully uh. Created by you, which is the lot line. You're using the delay ordinance as your hardship, correct?
Correct. Well, what, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing is I'm showing that if, if we went, if, so, so if we decide to apply for demolition. We'd apply to the Historic Commission. They would say, hey, it's historically significant or it's not. They have to make that determination. We believe in my conversations with Mr. Moore, that it's a historic structure, probably significant. His board would have to rule on that. If he wanted to, his board could say, there's a six-month delay, we want you to seek alternatives out. We're, we're saying, hey, let's, let's not even go there. Let's not even talk about demolition. Let's just, let's just seek alternatives to try to keep it there. And that's, that's why we're here before the ZBA. We're seeking an alternative to keep the barn in that current location. If we can't, if we can't get a variance, then we'll have to go for demolition delay and say, hey, this is how we're gonna modify it, or we're gonna knock it down. I mean, that's, that's the next step if we can't get a variance. So we, we're trying to, we're trying, we're trying to say, hey, we agree with the Historic Commission. We haven't even been before, and we don't ask, wanna ask for demolition. We just wanna, we wanna preserve this property in this location, restore it. But we need some relief, and we're seeking an alternative, and the, the alternative is that, is that variance.
Okay, and I just want, given what you're saying, I just wanna commend you for trying to keep it. If that's what the plan is gonna be, we'll see how it plays out in the next five to ten years. But if that's the case, then, then I commend you. But there is no, uh, based on the path that the other butter laid out. There is a back door for uh, for you to go through if, if, if you do not, as owner. Um, register it as a significant structure in the town.
Our, our intent and our goal is to have it restored. Uh, we wanna completely restore it. It, it'll be a stunning, it, it is a stunning property. It'll be unbelievable, you know, based on the renderings that are being done right now, so.
Does anyone else from the public like to comment? Again, you can, you have your camera on. Yes, uh, Alita, if you wanna unmute yourself and name an address, please.
Hi, I'm Alita Bazanson, and I live at two eighty-five Summer Street. I can see uh, through my backyard, right to where we're talking about. I have to say thank you, Patrick. I think what you proposed uh, is smart. It, it sounds like the right thing for the neighborhood. So I appreciate you trying to keep the house and uh, the barn. So thank you, and I hope. That this goes uh, as, as planned. That's it.
Anyone else like to speak? I think that. Nanette had put something in the chat, and that, I don't know if you wanna, want me to read it, or you would like to comment on it yourself. So Annette, uh, and it's just Nanette's iPhone. I don't know where she lives. Her comment is, sounds like a threat. We want to restore, but if we can't get a variance, we will demolish. Um, that is the last. Chat message. Um, and again, I'll just give me a minute, Mr. Chairman, just to go through. Not seeing any other hands up or anything new in the chat.
And I don't think that's a, it's not a threat. I think it's a reality, right? I think that. It, it, we need to seek some sort of relief to keep it where it is. If we can't, then we have to demolish part of it or move it, or demolish the whole thing. So I don't mean it as a threat. It's just, it's the reality. We have a. A zoning infraction now that, that we created, but we, but. We went as far back as we could, and we left double the land needed for that lot. We have three conforming lots with an accessory structure that's too close. And so, I, and that's, that's what I go back to. It, it is, it is an accessory structure. We do, it, granted, it's, it's bigger than. Than what's allowed, but we do allow accessory structures in town, much smaller than this in size, to be within, to be within five feet of a property line. Because of its square footage, it's required to be at the setback at, at twenty feet, so. You know, I would ask, but I, I understand the, the alternative um, variance. I think it makes a lot, you know, a non-conforming lot in the future. I think that by having an easement there, we have three conforming lots, we maintain access to the structure. You know, if you wanted to condition, um, before you sign the plan, we can give you the language for the easement. That, that, that demonstrates the size of the easement, that demonstrates um. The legal language in there that could be reviewed, if, if that's an alternative, if that's a, 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 a middle ground that we could meet on, but. I, I think, I think the easement is gonna, is gonna.
Jesse, can you mute yourself, please?
The easement, I think it only has to be about twelve feet wide, and I think that if we, if we do have the easement. We, we, as part of this, before you sign the plan, we could certainly submit that to legal review, so that. There is never an obstruction to that bond, um, and it could be legally enforced. I, I would have no problem doing that as well as showing it on the plan.
Ryan, do you wanna comment on whether it's non-conforming or conforming once the variance is given, or?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, once, if a variance is given, it is.
Right, exactly.
Non-conforming, so. Argument of, oh, well, we've got a conforming, no, you'd still have a conforming lot. Um, and nothing can happen to it, because you, you, but the variance gets filed with the Registry of Deeds, so. That one really doesn't work.
And as given by the town, yeah.
Yeah. Again, my, my major concern is, I, I've dealt with variances with people before, and when you have neighbors that don't get along. Variances don't work unless you go to court, and what we're saying is, look, there, there's an alternative to this where. You, you don't, you don't need an easement, and they have full control over the piece of property. You've got all conforming lots. As you said, you, you know, you, you're talking a six-month delay. If you do go to the root of trying to demo it. Then you can get what you're looking for in a lot less time.
Well, I guess my question is Steve Solari is, can this variance request be amended, or would they need to file a new?
I, I would think they need to file, Bob, because basically now what they're doing is they're leaving. Two. So that's, that's, so they would need to re, just reapply with a, with a different variance.
And then renotice it.
Exactly. That, that's the problem, because again, it wasn't done for the whole property, it was really done for just two fifty-nine. For like, the two, so.
But to Brian's point, I mean, you're still gonna be able to accomplish this while within the six months.
Well, just, just from a um. Just from a permitting standpoint, so we may have to go back to. We may have to file for a waiver request or subdivision request with, with the, with the planning board. So I mean, that, that, this could, this could delay this months and months and months, because we'd have to come back before the board. Get a variance, apply to planning, ask for a waiver request. I, I think that. I, I would really like to. I, I understand what Mr. Heath is saying, but if we, if we created a boundary at the easement, if we had strong language on the easement. I think, I think that's gonna achieve, you know, the, we're not getting any more density, we're not getting any more.
I don't think that's the point, Pat. The point is, the finding is a fact that the board has to rely on. Is that the hardship is not that this was an existing lot configuration. The hardship is, is the way that you subdivided lots two and three. So the hardship was created by you. And that's, I think that's where the, the board has a little bit of difficulty in terms of saying that you're meeting. The requirements of findings of fact.
All right, I think it would be your best interest to um, ask for continuance on the hearing. Gives you still the option to submit one, a lot two variance request. Um, to me, it's very clear as to where the, the board stands as far as. What they would feel comfortable with in terms of granting a variance and where they're not comfortable. And um, I, I, I think that um. I think that there is still a pathway to get to where you wanna go, and um. It's up to you. It's, it, this is your project, but that's my recommendation.
So, so we go back to, if, if I can shake, can I shake my screen again real quick? You know, one, one thing we did look at. And it's, and it's, and it would, and we could, we could do it without ZBA approval, and I don't wanna do it, right? But if, but if we're concerned about a ver- an easement, right? We could just, we could, we could take the lot line for lot two. And, and make lot two conforming, and keep lot one conforming, and keep the bond with lot two, right? And, and then give an easement for use or something for that, for that, for that bond there. And that wouldn't require any, any ZBA approval. I, I understand the, 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 the long-term, you know. Issue with potentially having, having a um. Having an easement there, but easements are used all the time for utilities, easements are used all the time for access, for plant things.
What's your objection to, a- as Larry suggested, adjusting the lot line in a short delay? I mean, I think you, you, your rationale is not helping the ZBA's position.
Well, I, I think, I think it's time. I think we've, we're already two months in, and this, I, I, I mean, realistically.
Pat, I mean, you, uh, we, we see this all the time in the planning board. We have meetings that are continued, applications that are continued, so. You know, I think that I, I, I'll be quiet.
All right, no, I, all right, I, I appreciate it, so.
Bob, do we have anybody remaining? If not, we can close the public comment. Pat, you could stop sharing your screen so I can see everyone, please, thanks. Uh, last call for.
Could I, could I ask Mr. Heath a question real quick?
Certainly.
If um, if we wanna continue this, you'd wanna keep the public comment open, is that correct or no?
You keep the public hearing open, yes.
Yeah.
But if you did decide to file a lot two, you could withdraw this one, and that, that, that would be a moot point.
Right, you're doing the same meeting.
Right.
Is it, Mr. Solari, is, is Mr. Solari still on? Could I ask Mr. Solari a question?
Yep.
Is it, is it your opinion that if we meet the frontage at the street, but not at the setback, we'd have to go for a waiver at the planning board as well?
Um, I gotta be honest with you, Pat, that, well, that's a planning board decision, uh, because a sub, uh. I would have, I, I don't know. I know that happened over on South Street, uh, for the lots. We had to go there because we, we give a variance to a lot, and that did have to go for a uh.
Yes.
Planning board. Um, so I probably have to say yes, based on that decision. So it would require a variance for the uh, setback, of course, at the, the, at the thirty feet, or thirty-five. And the um, planning board for uh, the subdivision.
The, the only difference there on South Street, though, was that the frontage request, the waiver, the variance request was for the frontage of the street. And it neglected to ask for the variance at the setback line.
Right, so we had to do it twice, yeah, yeah.
Little different. Uh, the waiver frontage, um, the waiver from the planning board may not be. Um, may not be needed, only because the way the statute's written, it uh, says that you have to have. Um, frontage, but if a town actually defines frontage as being measured at the setback line. Then I, that may trump it, and it may still require it.
Yeah, I would have to review that.
Yeah.
So, so Mr. Solari, we, we have a hearing for lots two and lot three on, on September seventh, where we're gonna be discussing the sites. Is that?
Based on a two family, I mean, a duplex requiring a special permit through the uh, planning board, correct?
You think I'd know this, right? But is that, could the planning board grant, legally, could the planning board grant a waiver as part of the special permit process? Or would that have to be a totally?
I don't, I don't think they can, because you can't bring, you can't bring a uh, a, a property and it has a zoning violation in front of the planning board. That's, I mean, nothing can go in front of the planning board if there's a violation on it.
Do you say September seventh, or is when you're?
August seventh.
Yeah, August seventh. But again, I mean. We move quickly on this, and this gets before the zoning. I mean, maybe you're not gonna make the seventh of August, but you'll make the second meeting in August for planning.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I, I like the layout better. I just don't know if, I, I think the process might be very lengthy, that's all. I. But, okay.
Think it's only as lengthy as it takes you all to file notice and get us a plan.
Yeah.
So is there a request to continue?
Like the idea of, of keeping it. We also like the idea of just keeping it three lots. What we don't like is, is the idea of the variance you guys are asking. I don't think there's an alternative to get you what you need. And. solves some problems, maybe, well, now and in the future.
So with that being said, uh, Patrick, is it okay to ask for a continuance?
Sure, yeah.
All right, so we were requesting that this public hearing be continued. Um, and that gives us the opportunity to either come back and argue it again. Or to come back uh, with a new application for the adjoining lot. Or, and if we decide to come in with that other one, the, uh, and we were going to try to uh, close this one out. Then we would just do that at that same meeting, correct?
Yeah, so the next ZBA meeting is on August fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
So, I mean. I guess if you move fast this week, you could advertise a notice and potentially be on that agenda.
Don't cause me any more stress, okay, Bob? All right. I, I really appreciate the patience of the board.
All right, so uh, if one of the board members would like to make a motion for a continuance.
I would make a motion to continue the variance request for two fifty-nine Summer Street.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Dan?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Self aye. So this is continued, hopefully, in. Yourself, aye. So this is continued, hopefully, and we can get on the uh, August fourteenth meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I tested your patience, so thank you very much for listening to me.
No, we appreciate you, we do.
I think the only patience you tested was Larry's. Rebecca liked that one.
Sorry, sorry.
Larry, Larry plays engineer and I play attorney, Larry plays attorney and I play engineer sometimes, so we're both, we're both dangerous, so.
Good cop, bad cop. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
All right, take care.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so that's the end of our agenda. They're not allowed to make a motion to adjourn, or Steve? If anyone, Anna or it's Dave, motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Dan?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
And myself. I appreciate everybody's patience tonight.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Take care.